Thank you. This regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Spring Independent School District is officially called to order on Tuesday, March 17, 2020. The time is now 7:07 PM. Trustees present, Winford Adams Jr., Kelly P. Hodges, Deborah Jensen, Justine Durant, Jenna Gonzalez, and myself, Rhonda Newhouse. I would like to ask everyone to turn off or silence their cell phones or electronic Thank you. At this time, I'd like for us to please stand and in unison, we will do the pledge of allegiance and the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice to God. Honored with the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. You may be seated. Even though we are seated, I would like to ask for a moment of silence from everyone, I know that our regular agenda and normal protocol states that we will now hear opening remarks from our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Rodney Watson. But as everyone is aware, we are all far away from normal right now. So as the Board President and on behalf of the Board of Trustees, if it's okay with you, Dr. Watson, I would like to make a few remarks.
Absolutely.
Okay. We've all been watching the news very closely throughout this pandemic. We're all trying to follow federal, state, and local orders. Today, I was scrolling through emails and news feeds, waiting on the next order. One particular email jumped out at me. I would like to take a moment to read aloud what I read on the Next Door Neighbor app this morning. "I would like to give a massive heartfelt thank you to Spring ISD for the breakfast and lunch for the four kids in our house today. You have no idea how much this meant. You gave us eight cartons of milk, two for each child, the exact amount that their pediatrician wants them to have. We had a half a gallon left in the house. We haven't been able to find any at the stores. What a blessing that milk was. Our nine-year-old has to watch her calcium intake very carefully. She breaks bones very easily. She broke her leg once, just walking across the room, not running, jumping, or skipping, walking. This milk today was such a blessing to us. Thank you to the ladies at the school. Thank you to the school. Thank you, Spring ISD." As I kept reading the comments after comments and even additional posts on how grateful families were for the eye-pouring love and support from Spring ISD, these posts filled my heart and actually brought tears. I had to just take a moment to cry. And it made me beam with pride and joy at the same time. It also made me think about the things that are most important, and that is the safety and security of my faith, my family, my friends, and my district. Dr. Watson, I would like to applaud you and your cabinet for your district and school administrators and the Spring ISD faculty and staff for the incredible job you all have done in securing Spring ISD. Dr. Watson, your leadership in the midst of another crisis is once again impeccable. Yes, schooling is very important. I mean, we are in the business of educating young leaders, but in educating young leaders through a crisis, you have taught us the importance of putting families first. I'm just happy to know that you consider the families of Spring ISD your extended family. Your efforts to make all families and students in Spring ISD and the Spring ISD community have their basic needs met throughout this troubling time is just an example of your love and grace. You and your team have assured that our teachers and students did not have to worry about missing schoolwork or testing during this time. At the same time, you made sure that no one in our community, student or families, go without a meal. You ensured that anyone in our community that needs or wants a meal can come to any of our neighborhood locations, the 11 specifically mentioned, and get a full breakfast, lunch items, and even a few healthy snacks. You've opened our schools and facilities to the city and county as testing or triage facilities. You've even opened our schools and facilities as a possible place of refuge. You've ensured that all of our facilities are sanitized and free of infectives throughout this process. Your astute attention to detail and your focus on families and our community has been remarkable. And before we get started with tonight's regular board meeting, we would like to give you and your team a standing ovation for your servant leadership through such irregular times. As a board, we want you to know how proud we are of the service aside with such incredible leaders. It is so wonderful to serve with you, your staff, your community, and this district. So it humbles me, Board, to say thank you for this, and we'd like to give you a standing ovation. I know there's not many here, but we truly appreciate it. And as the record shows, that we are most appreciative. Okay, now we'll get back to business. So, Dr. Watson, I'd like to recognize you for opening remarks.
Thank you, President Newhouse and the Board. Much as you said, this has been an unprecedented time for the country, and so I do want to say a special thank you to all of the cabinet members, ones that are here and the ones that are unable to be with us tonight. They have been working hard with their teams. I think KHR said it best in the email today. She's been up early, up late, and she and Dr. Age and Ken and Mark that are here tonight, they all have just been working tirelessly to make sure that our community is taken care of. And so, most of my updates, I've been sending to you all in emails and text messages to make sure you all stay up to speed. We do have some health updates that we're going to be going through tonight. Actually, Mark has several ones of them. He's going to be talking about maintenance and operations, leaving off of what we talked about, building cleanliness, as well as strategies and things we've done this week to help people get some items out of the building. Child nutrition, give you an update on our meals served as compared to meals prepared. Technology and health services. Lupita might jump in with him on health services to give us an update from our Director of Nursing, the area that she's leading. And then, last but not least, I'm going to have Ms. Bradford give us a high-level update on just the plans that we're going to get home learning started in the next week. That concludes my announcements for tonight. Thank you all very much for your support and leadership.
Thank you. Thank you. So next, I'd like to ask trustees if you would like to make remarks.
I would just like to echo President Newhouse. You guys have done a fantastic job. I don't think we ever have to worry about the communication. You guys are providing us everything we need, and I'm not getting phone calls from parents or employees saying what is going on. They know. Sometimes they know before I do because they're watching their emails, they're watching Twitter. So I commend you guys, and I know it's a tough job right now. You're here and you're trying to deal with your own families at home, and we certainly appreciate that. We're going through that at work as well. It's trying to balance both. It's a scary time, but you guys are doing a great job, and please, take care of yourselves and just keep up the good work. So thank you all very much.
I would like to highlight what an incredibly wonderful job Curriculum Instruction is doing. We have never tried to do this kind of homeschooling and remote instruction before. I mean, you are adjusting minute by minute, I guess, to different topic areas, different students, different connectivity that students have. And what I have seen on social media, because people are, teachers are assuring the public that there is all kinds of work going on behind the scenes, but what they have posted has been extremely helpful to all kinds of students in our district. And there's a teacher, one of my favorite teachers, and I won't embarrass her, but she posted how she has all these certifications, and she'd be happy to help with students who have problems in different areas. And when I posted back to her, I said she was a heroine, and then I looked up the definition of heroine, and I want to say this is hero for the males as well. A person noted for courage and daring action. A person noted for special achievement in a particular field. So these are teachers who care, really care about students, are expert in what they teach, and they are daring into trying to find new ways to reach their students. I commend your department and our teachers in Spring ISD.
Thank you. Our next item is a health services update. So at this time, Dr. Watson, would you like to take the lead on that, please?
Absolutely. So first, we'll start off with Mark giving us an update on his items, and then we'll move to Dr. Hinahosa on the nursing, and then Ms. Bradford on the home learning update. Start off with Mark.
Right. President Newhouse and Dr. Watson, members of the board. Earlier today, my 13-year-old daughter sent me an encouraging text message, and I sent her back a note that said she made my day. Well, the Next Door post may have actually just topped that. So we're really excited to be able to serve the district. That's what we're here for. And what's even more encouraging about that is just the attitude of those employees. They've been amazing. They've just exceeded expectations. I'm talking specifically about the child nutrition employees that have been out joyfully handing food out to their community, and it's just been an amazing thing. I haven't seen the fear and the different things that we're seeing in a lot of places with them, and so that's just been really a joyful thing to watch. Just their desire to serve is just incredible, so that's what we're here for. The good thing, one of my updates is just kind of a maintenance and operations and sanitation update. Kind of the good thing about this is that we started that before spring break, right? And none of us knew that we wouldn't come back from spring break at the time, but all of our crews worked during spring break, meaning maintenance and operations in every one of our campuses with a complete top-down sanitation, wiping off hard surfaces, doorknobs, you know, things of that nature throughout. We also added over 300 new stations all over the district in terms of fixing broken stations. We did an inventory for hand towels and soap dispensers and hand sanitizer stations. We fixed those that are broken throughout the spring break week, and we added new locations where they were needed. So brand-new hand sanitizer locations throughout our buildings, along with, you know, we had a few areas that had wet areas. In other words, they had sinks, but they didn't have the soap and they didn't have the hand towels. And we made sure through our inventory that every location where we had a wet location, we also had the ability to wash hands at that location. So it might be in a science lab or some other area that didn't previously have those, they do now. And so if you find any that don't, let me know because we think we got them all. So really excited about the work that was done during spring break, and as we're here kind of off and maybe sporadically in the buildings for various things, and I'll mention that in a second, we're continuously coming back and doing that without bringing full crews in, obviously trying to keep them safe as well. So on a maintenance and operations standpoint, I feel really good about where we are in terms of the cleanliness of the buildings, and we'll continue to monitor that. Obviously, as we get closer to reopening at some point, we'll come back in once again and do another top-down sanitization from there. One of the things, before I move to child nutrition, because that's an exciting one, but one of the things that we did this week is we did have to open the buildings up very briefly on Monday for what we were calling, you know, the five Ps. It was plants, pets, paper, PCs, and I think there's one more P that we're going to have to do later, but we had some of those things where teachers and principals and other individuals had to come get them. We have pets in some of our classrooms. We have frogs in science labs. We have, you know, we had some snakes and some spiders, and they needed to have someone to come pick them up and care for them and bring them home is what we've done. And as we were asking for that, we had teachers asking about their plants, and so we did it in a very orderly way. Just so you'll know, we had a list that was created for every campus. It wasn't a free-for-all by any means, and it was supported by our maintenance and operations. And Dr. Hinahosa and her leadership with that team was able to get us very specific people, and we kind of ushered them to the areas that they needed to be in and leave. That gave us an idea of who was in the building, what they were in the building for, and the areas that they attended in the building, so that we would know from a cleanliness standpoint where we needed to follow up and be on that. You've noticed probably, if you've paid attention, that the other school districts are either having to figure out how to do that or have also already done that. Some of the chief operating officers in the region have been texting one another for ideas, and I'm still receiving texts on how we did that. And so I was able to share some of our procedures with them earlier today because they're going to be doing that in their school district as well. So we think that went really well. That was yesterday. We're trying from there to do that all at one time so that we don't have people trickling into our buildings because we don't want to have to then follow up again and again with that. So we're keeping that, we're keeping an eye on that throughout, and we have secured all of the buildings, and so we should be, we should, should be pretty good on that front. In regards to child nutrition, we've already heard a lot about kind of what's happening out there and seeing the photos and the successes there. I want to give you some numbers, Joe, just so you'll know, and we could get this to you in more detail if you'd like, but yesterday, I think people were just kind of waking up and figuring out that we were doing that and so forth. I was at Meyer as soon as they opened in the morning, and the child nutrition ladies were asking me to go through the neighborhood with a bullhorn and let them know they were there. And later on, of course, I said, "Well, you know, they're waking up, they'll be here." So yesterday, we served 1,589, both breakfast and lunches. And what we're doing, because we're open from 8 to 11, is when they come, we're actually giving them both meals at the same time. And so that's why those numbers are the same, 1,589. That was yesterday. As the word got out, today, we increased by over 1,000 meals. And so today, we are at 2,780. So we saw a significant increase, but we were able very quickly to move those lines, and so we didn't have people to mind knowledge unless maybe one or two schools, but we didn't have people that were waiting in inordinately long time to be able to get their meals. We were getting them in pretty quickly and getting them through the line.
Are those numbers for all of the science programs?
They are, 2,780. So there is more opportunity for people to come in and get their meals. And I suspect that, you know, the longer this goes on and the deeper we go into it, those numbers will continue to increase. We'll be watching those numbers on a daily basis, and we're trying to create and prepare the meals kind of just in time so we don't have a lot of waste, right? So we didn't double the amount of meals that we prepared and then ended up with meals that we couldn't serve. So just as an example, today for our lunch items, we prepared 2,857, 2,857, and we served 2,780. So we didn't have a huge loss in terms of prepared and not able to serve. The really neat thing is that child nutrition is starting to come up, and they're getting excited about other types of offerings that they can. They realize right now we're looking at packaged sandwich-type things, but they're discovering ways to potentially be able to do hot meals, which would be incredible if we're able to pull that off, to be able to get hot meals out as well. Because I think after a little while, you know, people are going to tire on having just kind of the sandwich-type meals, the faster meals that we're doing now. So they're aware of that, and they're working on, you know, the possibilities of how we're going to be able to do that. And so I'm glad to keep pushing them in that direction so that we can, we can maybe diversify that and have some variety out there for them. Any questions on the child nutrition or the maintenance?
Could you talk a little bit about how we're protecting our people from exposure and the social distancing?
Yeah, so, and that's, honestly, it's difficult if we're specifically talking about child nutrition. They understand the social distancing that we've talked about, but they're also very social. So it's kind of working against their nature in some ways to say, "Hey, you need to be socially distant." And yesterday was an example. We were taking photos and excited about that, and some of them were kind of arm-in-arm in the photos, and we're like, "Wait a minute, we need to have that back up a little bit." So they are prepared, they do have gloves and masks, if you've seen them, they have both. This is a drive-through for the most part. This is a drive-through pickup. Some of our locations, and we strategically picked locations that were in neighborhoods so that some of the parents wouldn't have to drive, and there may be transportation issues, and so there is walk-up, there are walk-up lines as well, but we're keeping them, we're trying to keep them at a distance, and we know that's difficult. You know, it's a balance between keeping our staff safe and serving the community. And just like, I think, a lot of the fast-food restaurants and different things, we're trying to keep it at a drive-through as much as possible to limit that interaction between the parents, the families, and our staff, but then also kind of limit that connection between staff members as well. So we had a couple of different ways we were looking at it, whether we rotate the staff in, but then we had other conversations that said, "Let's not rotate the staff in, let's keep the same staff," because the more we rotate in, the more exposure the staff gets with different people. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And so we're kind of trying to keep the same people. And, you know, unfortunately, if some of them do get ill, we have others that we could bring in, I know that, but we want to continue to serve the community as much as possible. We know it's a huge need.
I have read about a district somewhere, and now it's escaping me, that is using their buses to deliver meals to larger bus stops where the kids are.
Yeah, and we are open. We've had discussions, I've already had discussions with our Transportation Director, Mr. Jack Mann, and we are strategically looking at locations that, you know, as this carries out further and as the demand grows. Right now, we're not seeing the demand, and some people may say, "Well, that's because they don't have the transportation." But as we hear that, we intend to stay flexible with everything that we're doing, even the sites, right? We're monitoring every site. If we have a low site, you know, we may end up making decisions. If we have other areas that are higher, we may end up making decisions on placing additional lines at those sites. But Transportation has actually already sent me a map, so we're on top of that and aware of those possibilities as well.
Mr. Adams, the only other thing I want to add to that is, so yesterday and today, I had an opportunity to go out and actually visit with the child nutrition workers at the sites, and one of the things that I impressed upon them was letting us know if they were uncomfortable, feeling okay to say if they were uncomfortable, and they were more comfortable than anybody I've ever talked to. And they were like, "No, we wanted to, our kids need this." But I wanted to make sure they understood they had a voice, and they could share their concern if they didn't have any concerns.
Is it possible for us to maybe do a survey online real quick to see if there is a need for us to provide some type of delivery service? I don't know, similar to what we did with the Chachos thing, maybe just asking to see if there is a need?
So we can definitely do a survey. We can do a survey monkey. My concern is, if we start telling, if we do that, and the survey comes back that we need a meals delivered everywhere, and we don't do it, then that may be more harm than us looking at, because, for example, I'm looking at some of the, I look at some of the information that's on social media now, and parents, some parents in certain areas are asking, they're not saying that they can't come, but they're asking, "Why can't you bring the food to our door? Why can't you bring the food to our neighborhood and to our bus stops?" And so I agree with what Mark and I have talked about in terms of, "Let's go ahead and look at that." My only concern would be if we get the high demand that says, "Yes, we told you we want to do that, and we're unable to do that," would there be any blowback from the community because if we don't do it? And so we can definitely get a survey monkey out, and our survey monkeys will be sent, our survey monkey, our questionnaires would be sent to every household, so we can definitely get that.
If not a survey, I think there needs, there may be, if there's some way we can just revisit that, because either way, we may, you know, we may get a blowback if we don't provide meals to those that are unable to get to the location.
So you would like a survey that says, "Just wants to know what specifically we can get that out."
You know, is there a need for the delivery, or maybe if we were to deliver, is this a service that you can utilize? I'm not really sure we can kind of determine that, but I think, we, like you said, we know that there are probably more people that have a need for the meals.
Okay.
We need to kind of determine how we can provide that, especially if this continues past the next, you know, probably month.
And I did receive some calls, primarily from the churches, around delivery to the apartment complexes where parents didn't have transportation. But in talking with Dr. Watson, we want to avoid, you know, contamination possibilities and then other exposures, and also ensuring that it's our kids that are receiving the meals when we start delivering them outside of the district. So I know there was some collaboration and work going on around Spring, all being inclined kind of getting together to offer a way to get the meals to folks that don't have transportation. But I do think your recommendation, maybe a quick little survey on where do you live, how many students do you have, have you had an opportunity, you know, have you picked up meals? Were you satisfied with the meals you received? Were you unable to access the meals through the transportation? Maybe give them five reasons to check why they didn't come, and that can kind of give us a, and then where do you, where do you live? Get the location of where they are. And maybe list four or five reasons, kind of make the survey multiple choice. "I was unable to pick up the meals because my working hours, I don't have transportation," you know, whatever, along those lines. And that could give us some insight as trustee Hodges shared.
You can do that.
If this keeps going on for an extended period of time, we may want to look at some other options. But we do have to be careful when we start delivering them outside of our campuses. Right now, I'm very proud of our child nutrition workers that are supportive, but we don't want to put them in a position where they start leaving the site out in areas where we don't know what kind of exposure they're going to run into. So we have to kind of be careful and think that through.
We'll put something together and try to get it out into this week or next week.
And one last thing, I know that the Houston Food Bank is, has a meal program as well, so it may be, that may be an opportunity if we can partner with them to make, if they're doing that delivery service. Are we doing?
We've looked into that, and Mark has talked a little bit about it. I know Houston is using it, but they're requiring you to have hundreds of volunteers to come out to help you do that, and that's bringing large crowds of people together to pack the meals and send them. You want to say anything else about that?
Well, just that that's also something that's on our radar. We've been contacted by the Houston Food Bank. It's potentially, depending on how long this goes on, you know, that would be something to supplement what we're doing, but at this time, for some of those reasons of the gathering and what have you, we do have the contacts, and we do know if we get to that point where we need that kind of help, where we can, we can trigger that as well.
If I should, with the pastor that reached out, reached out to me as opposed to us bringing meals, then maybe they should work on bringing the parents and the kids to our loving sites.
Right, with their church, they have their things, yeah.
They transport the kids to us.
Mm-hmm. That's a great idea.
Absolutely.
That was my recommendation.
They're trying to figure out how.
They're working on it.
I know a lot of churches, my own included, are trying to figure out how to help because they want to help, but we also want to stay at a distance and keep that social distancing. It makes it, makes it difficult.
That's a really good, we could probably raise. That's a really good, we could probably reach out to our Minister Alliance.
It was Green House International Church and Farbrooke.
Yeah, we could reach out to our Minister Alliance group and ask them.
If they can transport the people to our sites.
Yep.
That don't have transportation. To me, that's the best way to get to parents that don't.
That's great, great.
And I told them they have to bring the kids with them and have their ID, so we know that they're ours. Yeah.
So, and they continue with the technology? So, from a technology standpoint, we have the, we have two different railroad tracks, I guess, if you will. One of them is the network, right? And then the other one is the devices. And so we do have a lot of students that have cell phones, and some students have their own devices. But we realize that we need to get more devices out into the hands of our students. And so we've conducted an inventory of the Chromebooks we have in place. Thankfully, from the BOM program and from other funding sources, we do have a lot of Chromebook carts in our school district, specifically at our secondary campuses. And we are going to be able to utilize those Chromebooks for students. And so technology is actively working on that as well, as we speak, literally. They have to disassemble the Chromebook carts so that they can get the power, the power cord out of the carts and sanitize those and have those prepared. But we are working very closely with Kichara's team to be able to have that plan in place, so that we can support the things that they're doing in instructional media with devices. And we're really looking at kind of prioritizing, and I'm sure she'll talk about this a little more, but prioritizing the seniors that are getting ready to graduate, making sure that they're equipped with the device. I think Kichara's team is conducting a survey of technology equipment as well, so that we know where the biggest needs are for that equipment. And on the other side of the track, you know, our teams in technology are working on preparing the devices for that. And so we're really excited about the fact that we had so many devices in place at our secondary, that we're going to be able to be good there. Now, is that enough for all of our campuses and all of our students? It's not. And so there may be, we may have to have more discussions about where do we go from here and that. But we have a short-term plan for that. And developing a longer-term plan for more devices and connectivity could be something that we'll need to discuss. In terms of the network capability, we do have a very robust network and Wi-Fi capacity within our buildings. I saw recently that a neighboring school district was talking about pushing their Wi-Fi devices to the neighborhoods, so that people in the neighborhoods could do that. Ours are capable of doing that as well. There's, there's nothing really different that we need to do. When we created our networking system, we wanted the police, for example, to be able to sit in the parking lot and have access. And so our buildings have that type of a capability. I'm not certain that we want to advertise that, to have people come to the building parking lots and do that. And so at this point, we're not necessarily doing that. But if you see that out there, just know that our Wi-Fi does extend beyond our building walls. And so just kind of putting that out there, that we do have the networking capability to do things. That's pretty much it for technology. And I'm going to pass it over unless there's technology questions.
I do have a question, and maybe this is a question for you, Dr. Watson. But I'm wondering if with all the talk in Congress, and maybe even in our state legislature, about funding for different initiatives for COVID, if anybody is talking to Sheila Jackson Lee or to Jarvis Johnson, or any of our legislators, about funding for things like E-Rate funding, maybe for Chromebooks and things of that nature, if this is going, if this could potentially be our new normal, then it seems to me that while we're legislating and funding all these initiatives, we ought to be thinking about that, and so having our voice heard on that.
Yes, so Jarvis Johnson did reach out to me on Sunday. He and I didn't talk specifically about that. But what our Commissioner has been talking about is, as we're looking at expenses that are related to COVID-19, we need to keep meticulous records, because every event that we have, either FEMA or the government, has provided funds for us to be reimbursed. And so he's almost sure that we'll get reimbursement after things calm down. But we need to keep copious records of everything that we're purchasing and why. And so to that point, we're planning to come back to you all, our Technology Department, and Mark have been working on getting quotes and bids on different things that we might be able to use to help kids, especially if this is a more long-term problem. And so we're not quite ready yet to bring that to you all, even though we have some preliminary numbers. We're looking at a variety of different things and getting a variety of quotes. But should we need to have an emergency meeting by phone, that I think Jeremy will talk with you about later, there's something that we can talk about. But they have mentioned that and told us that they know that we're going to incur a different cost related to COVID-19 for us to keep our records straight and our receipts, because we'll be able to submit those.
Okay.
Jeremy?
And just a quick update, and we'll talk about it again when we get to the resolution. But I've been working very closely with our Procurement Department. We've also been working very closely with Sarah Langwa from KBS Log Group, to make sure that we are jumping through the right hoops and using the right forms and using the right addendums to contracts, so that should FEMA reimbursement become available, we're set up at a point to be able to get that. And we've done everything right and followed all the right processes, so that we'll be able to do that. Philip Ellison has been very forward-thinking with the Child Nutrition Team, the Custodial Team, and some of the other teams on making sure we have those set up and we're ready, should that FEMA money become available. So...
If there are no more technology questions, I'm going to pass the baton over to Dr. Hinojosa to talk about Health Services.
Thank you, Ms. Newhouse and members of the board. And thank you for sharing that next-door posting. I think it really is reflective of the employees that we have and the commitment to this community. Anytime we have a challenge, I think, you know, Harvey was the first test. This is our second test. And I know that we will be successful. We've got a strong, a strong, strong district. From the Health Services side, you all met Ms. Jeanne Parker last week, the week before. So she continues to participate in daily phone conferences. There's one in the morning that is held through Region 4, and then there's one in the afternoon through the Health Department. So she continues to participate in those meetings. The updates that she's getting are the same updates that the Superintendent is getting in his meetings. But it's good to stay abreast of what the city and the county are doing. The second piece is, we're also closely monitoring our travel registry. We did have a lot of employees that went, that left the country. European travel, there's a lot. We also had a lot of people on cruises, as well as people in South and Central America. So, you know, Ms. Parker's monitoring each one of them. Once we do come back, you know, this may be a moot point, but she is, she does have that confidential report. And we'll monitor, by the time we end up coming back, to check in on these employees. The next piece that she's working on and has quickly developed is a protocol to call in. We have had employees call in that said, you know, they believe they were with a person that may have been infected and/or they have flu-like symptoms. So any call that comes in, immediately, these employees are right now calling into their principal. So the protocol is to call into the principal. Principal immediately calls Ms. Parker, our Director of Health Services, and of course, their own nurse. Then we follow up with the employee to get whatever medical records are available. And then she follows up on it. Of course, she keeps in close contact with Harris County Department, Health Department, to be able to report whatever is necessary. So she is keeping track. And so that protocol, we're refining, refining, so that we make sure that it's clear to everyone district-wide. The next piece is definitely working on a process that we want to make available as soon as possible, is for our parents to be able to communicate with the schools if they need to pick up medication. So we've developed a link with specific information that will be needed. So we're working with our Communications Team to be able to post it on our district website, as well as on the campuses, so that we can find a way for the parents to come up and pick up their children's meds. The last piece, the same thing with social-emotional services. So created that same process, so that if we have families, parents, and/or students that need to reach out to their counselors, whether it is they're experiencing any trauma and want to speak to their counselor, and/or just their counselor as they start thinking about their grades in their classes. We've also developed a link for that, and working with our Communications Department to get that posted, so that our counselors can have communications with the students and their parents. And then, of course, just staying vigilant and advising everyone to stay vigilant. I have to say that our principals and our teachers are so very committed to our families. I think when we announced the food delivery, we had teachers and principals all willing to sign up immediately to, you know, deliver food and whatever is, you know, that they can do for the community, totally committed to our community. And that's, if you have any questions about Health Services. All right, passing it over to Ms. Bradford for curriculum and instruction.
All right. Good evening, President Newhouse, Dr. Watson, members of the board. We are gearing up and preparing for what we're calling empowered learning at home. It's one of those cases of be careful what you wish for, because it just might happen. And definitely, we were, you know, on the cutting edge of blended learning and digital learning. And we have Schoology available to us and lots of digital resources. And now it is just getting those resources to our parents and to our families. So Dr. Watson always asks us for a plan, and I'm always grinsing, you know, because another plan. But I'm always thankful for it at the end. So over the weekend, we started working on a plan for really what this would look like, to provide at-home learning for our students. And Dr. Watson also encourages us to reach out to principals and get their feedback and input before we roll anything out. And so yesterday, it was really she and I doing a lot of the backend work. Today, I was able to connect with principals and talk to them. And it really did just, you know, I was in such a fog of the work, that it really did, like Dr. H's point, they are so eager and so ready. And they have such great insight on how we can really make this work for our students and families. So they have vetted the plan, and they feel really good about it. So starting tomorrow morning, we start talking to our principals through virtual meetings that we've set up with each zone or each small group of principals, begin sharing with them our plan for empowered learning at home. And then tomorrow afternoon, we have our eSuccess Academies, which we've had scheduled, you know, we've had, this will be our eighth one this year. We have a huge turnout. I think every teacher is trying to sign up. We, like, Dr. H is texting me, the teachers can't get in. So we're doing a virtual, through Zoom, we're doing a virtual eSuccess Academy. We're really going to talk to our teachers about our plan, and also their part in it, and their setting up their classes in Schoology. So we do have Schoology. We have used it this year primarily for a curriculum house, storing our curriculum. Our virtual school, though, did take it on full-on, and they have run the whole program. And so now, we're going to have our other teachers learn how to take our content and put it in their courses, so that they really can have hands-on oversight of their students. And they can also document contacting, you know, when they've reached out and talked to them. We are having e-learning, as well as tele-learning, so that students can call in, or parents can call in and ask us questions, either centrally to curriculum or to campus teams, to ask questions, or, you know, get more information. All of our programs are accessible across multiple devices, including a smartphone. So if they have a phone that has access to the internet, they can get into our programs. And so we're excited to hear more from principals tomorrow, let them see it one more time, share it with our teachers, get their input, and also really, you know, have them have a grasp of their work over the next few weeks. And then share it out to the families and the community, so that they really know. We have a, sort of, I was talking to Dr. H on the way over here. So we've been working nonstop, like, okay, we're driving to the board meeting, call me. So we were just talking through our plan, where we really do have three phases, just depending on how long we are out for this extended break. So the first phase is, we're sending a link with access to a website that we've created, with resources for parents and students and for teachers. It's really an awareness site. Within that site, they will see a technology survey, so we will be able to find from parents, that's one of the links on there, is to fill out the survey. We'll be able to know what grade level their students are in, how many students they have at home, how many devices, and specifically, which type of devices, and if they have access to internet. So in partnership with Mark's team in technology, which we've been talking very closely, we will then share that information and develop a plan for what that might look like. We're also sharing information about learning that doesn't require devices. So there's a lot that you can do at home with your students that doesn't require them logging into a computer and doing work. Just conversation, thinking about social-emotional learning, thinking about physical learning and movement during this time, and just, you know, reading the back of a cereal box, and thinking about measurement, and how many calories, and talking through a lot that students can do at home with their families that doesn't require a device. And so we will also honor that, for sure. The second phase, so that's really Phase 1, is just getting parents out and understanding what's there, and knowing how to log into our textbooks. You know, we've had a lot of digital resources, so it's really getting them into all of our digital textbooks. With almost, with all of our textbooks, we have a digital application, so they can log in and do that. And then just how they can access us if they need support. So we also have a curriculum support document that's linked on the website. If they need help with anything, or how to get in, then our numbers are right there. We have our numbers listed, and they will call us through our, to our cell phone from our office numbers. I just want to make sure that we've done that, before we send it out. So let's say they call, you know, Dr. Perrisso's number, in the office, it will then ring to his cell phone, and so that he can answer those calls that any parent has. The second phase, which is what we're meeting with principals about, teachers and principals about tomorrow, is then moving into more personalized learning. And that's where teachers actually have that Schoology class, and that they pulled the resources that we have district-wide, in a hub that we're calling at-home learning, and they put them into their own classrooms, so that way they can differentiate for their students. They can have contact with their students, they can do little chats or discussion groups. And they can also provide very needed accommodations, and document how they're also supporting their special education students through this process. So the first website launch really gives parents an opportunity to begin working, while teachers and curriculum are also working on the backend to create those custom courses for our students. And then the third phase, just of course, depending on how long we're out, is really targeting for our seniors, and also for our, going deeper with our special education students or students that need accommodations. So really making sure that our seniors have everything they need, the devices they need, anything, documentation, so there's no hindrance for them in being able to leave Spring I C with, you know, everything covered and ready for the next phase of their life. And so that's really our plan. Definitely appreciate the whole leadership team. It's definitely been a whole-team effort. And principals and teachers are really ready to go. They're very, very excited. We'll see what they think in a few weeks of, you know, working online. But the good news is that we have plenty of digital resources. We're sharing lots of ideas for things that don't need, you know, a device. And also, everything will be device-agnostic. So whatever kind of device you have, if it's an old tablet or a Kindle, they will be able to, if it can get online, they'll be able to connect with us. Any questions?
Dr. Watson, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
In a message to us, you viewed this, we never wanted a pandemic, but it's forcing innovation in this area. Could you comment on what you're thinking of?
So for me, it's really, one of the things we said in our meeting yesterday and today, when the cabinet was meeting, is forcing us to think differently, and to use people in different ways. And in the beginning of us beginning to think differently, in a different situation, sometimes we go back and try to think the way we thought. And we're constantly reminding each other that this is a different time and a different situation. And that calls for us to really think outside of the box. And so, much like Mark and Kichara said today, everything doesn't revolve around technology. We know people don't have it, so we've got to be creative. And to some degree, go back to the basics when there wasn't technology. But for individuals that can leverage technology, we want to make sure that's an opportunity for them as well. More than anything, we're trying to calm the nerves. I know Dr. Hinojosa's heard this as well. We have our seniors who are concerned. Because, you know, you have College Board, and they've already announced that they've canceled the April SAT/AC testing. Because, you know, you have college board and they've already announced that they've canceled the April SAT, ACT testing. They've canceled the May SAT and ACT testing. And these students, our kids are wondering what's going to happen about college. What am I going to do? They've canceled state and of course assessments. And so the commissioner's already let us know that we're going to have to go through our IGC committees to make decisions because rules like you have to pass at least five of your EOCs, that's not going to be a rule anymore. Today, he let us know that even as we're thinking outside of the box and planning, we have, you know, I didn't know this, but in the, across the state, we have down to the level of fifth graders who are taking Algebra I this year. And so those individuals won't take the Algebra I test. And next year, the state's not going to ask them to go back and take the test for the class they took a year ago. So we're going to have, all of these things are going to have ripple effects as we go throughout. And so we've just got to really be prepared and be focused in on how we're going to cause our families and students not to panic and not to get stressed out, but to have answers as they continue asking us these hard questions. You know, they're worried about graduation. I was coming up today, Texas A&amp;M just canceled their May graduation today. And so there's a lot of districts that are wondering how we're going to keep some normalcy, but at the same time, look at things differently. They're worried about their senior trips and their proms. So all of those things, you know, we're worried about the big pandemic thing. And the kids are like, this is my senior year, three months left, what about all my friends? So those types of things, we'll repeat as a whole host of conversations and emails and systems for social and emotional, and that's going to be critical during these times.
I have a question. I have a bunch of questions. I'm trying to limit myself. One, I was curious about, you said the virtual school had been using Schoology. What was their learning curve like? And, I mean, do we think we can shorten that curve?
Well, yes. So their learning curve was tremendous. She was actually on the conference call with us this morning. The principal of the virtual school was on the conference call with us this morning to talk us through a lot of her lessons learned that we necessarily won't need to repeat at all with this new launch. The virtual is a different type of campus because of how it's coded in e-school because they pull students from other campuses. I can be a student at Spring High School, but I'm taking a class at virtual, so they're scheduling. So a lot of what they kind of led the bloody edge on, we have lessons learned on our side, on their side, on, you know, to really avoid some of those. And the other piece of that is that's kind of why we're launching the first phase with parents getting information from the website and looking at, you know, what they can do for their students and some grade level specific resources. But giving us this next week on the backend to ensure everything with Schoology is 100% ready to go. There are the courses there, students are in there, teachers are in there. We just want to make sure we can, you know, push it out very, very smoothly and we fix any type of hiccups before it goes out to parents.
Thank you.
Yes, it moved our timeline up quite a bit. We were going to be ready for fall and now we're today or tomorrow. So we're just doing all those things on the backend. But from technologies and everything looks really good. You know, this year, our trial, you know, year to go in the system and play with it. And we do have some teachers who are not at virtual school who have gone in and they are way ahead of the curve as well. So some of us will be catching up to them. But I think it's a great, we'll know how to use this resource after this, after we come back from this.
Do we look in to begin instruction next week?
So once we send our initial website, there are lots of things that students can do for instruction. So they can go into their textbook, they can go into some of our district-wide systems. So with Pearson, we have Success Maker, we have Admentum. So they can go in and start working immediately. We also have given access to the curriculum. But we know that, you know, parents looking at the curriculum is different from a teacher looking at it, but still sharing that out for parents to look at. We have videos that they can watch, YouTube videos that students can see. Then once they're in their classroom with their teacher, that's just where they get more of their personalized touch point. They're getting something from someone familiar and it's really targeted just for them in the whole scope of their learning.
The only thing I want to add to that, and Dr. H helped me out on this as well. One of the big things that we're having to think through is students with special education. That's huge. So the federal government has waived all kinds of requirements, but they have not waived anything as relates to special ed and they're not. And so once the learning comes out, we are trying to figure out a way to provide services to students with special needs, which could require, as we discussed in our call today, which could require our teachers to go through and have virtual arts for every single student with special needs in our district because it'd be a change of placement, not at the school, but at home instruction. Then that's one big piece. The other piece is for our students that are medically fragile. Our students that are on feeding tubes and things of that nature. The most difficult part that we're discussing and trying to figure out is those students, you can't just give them an accommodation over a computer or through a worksheet. And so the conversation from TEA has been looking at ways to bring those medically fragile students back to school, which we all think, okay, that's going to be more than 10 in a room. But that's the quandary that we're in, trying to figure out how do we service our medically fragile students and give them their accommodations because it can't be given to them while they're at home. It has to be in a place. And how do we, and we're talking about our students that, that we have partnerships with Bayes Treatment Center and all of that, those kids that go up to Huntsville daily. We're trying to figure out how we service those kids. And so do you have any other updates or comments regarding that, Dr. H?
No, it is, it's exactly that. And so we're waiting for guidance. Both the Department of Ed and the state put out their guidance as late as yesterday and they have not retracted and/or changed any of their guidance. So once, as Ms. Bradford said, Level One or Phase One is more exploration and access to all those resources. But once we go into Phase Two, which we're calling the personalized learning, that's when we're actually doing learning opportunities. That's when then the federal and state law kicks in that we need to offer our students the same type of, you know, instruction and the modifications. So there hasn't been any guidance yet or leniency as far as changing that, as well as any of the arts that are coming up. The only thing they said that we could put on hold is any of the initial testing because we have a lot of students that are in queue right now and you know there's that 45-day deadline, 30-day deadline. So that's the only thing, but everything else we must proceed. And that's where we're looking at every single option as to, you know, our students that are either medically fragile or require assistive technology, talking about with operations, how can we get that out to the families? Because the student may need to do the exercise or the speech, you know, equipment that he or she has. But once we start this Phase Two, which we're calling the personalized learning, then that piece kicks in and we have to make sure that we've satisfied to the very best of our ability that opportunity for those students to continue to learn. So two phases, but right now, once we launch this, students will have access to all of that learning that we have, all of the online resources, all of that. So students won't be at home this week or next week waiting. The team has already put all that together and will be launched. And then Phase Two is that more personalized learning where we are creating those classrooms and really looking at the two groups, as Ms. Bradford said, the seniors and then our special education students.
I'm sorry, just one last point. So you, your part, Phase Three talked about targeted instruction for seniors and special ed students. I think the only thing that I'm a little concerned about leaving out is our at-risk students. The students that are already kind of not engaged in school and we're struggling to pull them in. I sort of see this as an opportunity to make up some gains off the clock while we have some forbearance from the feds and the state. But I worry about those students that will see this. Like, I'm thinking of my son specifically actually, who would just as soon never go to school again if he had his way. I'm going to have to force him to do this stuff. So I worry about those kids.
And I mean, one of the goals, I think, is that it could be more engaging for students. They do like videos and so we are encouraging and our team is actually making short instructional videos where we're talking directly to students and it is a great way where we can say, okay, pause and now do this. You know, practice these sounds or write this down on your own or, you know, take these notes and then, you know, pause the video and they do that. So it could be a way for them to get short bursts of instruction. A five-minute video may keep your attention more than a 20-minute lecture in class. But definitely thinking about for sure engaging students and making it relevant and meaningful to them. My son's been asking to be homeschooled for like three years and so I'm like, okay, now you have it. And so let's see if you can do anything with it. But definitely, and then we've also found out that some of our systems can be, they can pull them up on their gaming system, so like Playstation and Xbox. They can use those to also get into our systems as well. So it could be like doing a video game, perhaps maybe.
Thank you.
Mark was going to say, when we talked about the barriers and challenges around our special needs students, that that is, to me, an actual good opportunity to engage our legislators in support around getting additional resources needed, especially in relation to our special ed student population. So I did, I did want to ask, I wrote it down so I wouldn't forget. So for Phase Two, when we're moving into personalized learning. And so what, if I'm hearing you correctly, we're looking to begin teachers, teacher-supported instruction through digital resources so that students will be able to receive their instruction online. And Phase Two is that, you're saying that next week. Is that phase phased? I mean, will it come up for all students effective day one? Are we bringing in elementary, then middle, then high school? How are we pushing that out? And are we ensuring our bandwidth can support that streaming? Because it crashed the system on my job, so with all that streaming.
Yes. Well, I'm finding that too. I keep getting kicked out of the Google Hangout that I'm on and so I either call in or I've actually had a better connection on my phone, so I'll pop my phone up. So tomorrow, we actually start talking to teachers about getting them into the system and getting them working so that for the next week, they will have content in there. How to pull the content from the curriculum site into their own classes within Schoology. And then once they put it on there, students can access it at their own time, at their own pace, whenever they're ready for it. Some teachers may have a schedule where I'll be available at this time. I mean, there's going to be a lot of flexibility. I think I'll know more once I talk to principals and teachers tomorrow and what that would look like. But we also have a weekly Zoom meeting planned throughout all of these weeks, each week with principals and with teachers to get their input and feedback and to see what's working. We can also, you know, make more recommendations or based on if they're meeting with students, not meeting with students, if they are having successes, what's working, what's not, or we can also tweak it. And that's what we're really finding is that, you know, the plan I had yesterday from the plan today, we are being very flexible in the moment and finding out what's there and what's not. Students may like YouTube videos or they may prefer to go in and do the online discussion boards. And so really having opportunities for different learning styles to do well. I think it would be cool if our students start making their own videos or start, you know, creating their own blogs to show what they're learning. So the sky's the limit. We just want to really make sure we have, you know, everyone prepared and that, you know, there's the minimum expectations are out there for our students to be successful and then I think they can take this and really run with it.
They will, yeah.
I'm excited that our teachers are excited about doing this. They're venturing into a new phase of teaching and learning for our students. So in getting this information out to our community, to our students, are we sending emails and websites? Are we separating pages for elementary, middle school, secondary? Have we divided this out as to how we're getting that? And I guess lastly to ask, to throw this in. I think I understand you to say that our programs are geared such that our students can use their cell phones. Because I thought about, I know everybody doesn't have a Chromebook, but I bet you 95% of our kids have a cellphone and on the internet. Such that, that's good to hear that they will be able to, if they don't have a laptop at home or a computer at home, that they will still be able to be reached through the cell phone. But what's our plan to get it out to the community?
So we've been very mindful of communications and we've been, you know, in communication with communications quite a bit. And they've given us a lot of feedback on our drafts and even the web layout and what looks good for parents and how easy it is. So we're making those, fine tuning those. And then we do hand it to our communications team and they do a great job of blasting it through Blackboard. I'm sure we'll share it through social media. We'll have it posted on our Spring ISD website and different websites. Once principals get ahold of it, they will also be sharing it out to their campus teams. You know, it can come from a lot of different avenues. Dr. H shared the, or, you know, recently they shared the newsletters again for principals who had been creating those wonderful newsletters for their campus. This can go on those as well. So I think we'll do good blasting it out through, you know, the link through text message and email and just, you know, making sure everyone is aware that it's out there. And the teachers are seriously very excited to do this. They've been like chomping at the bit all week. And we just don't want them to overwhelm the families yet because they're so into it. So we are, you know, really guiding the process and making it very intentional. And we realize as big of a priority it is for us, families are also dealing with a lot of other things right now. And so I think it'll be a good time to ease into creating that academic support in their home for their students.
The only thing I would add to that, Ms. Newhouse, to answer your question. Ms. Bradford has shared earlier, I think she was joking, she was probably serious, but I thought she was joking, when she says, I like plans. We have divided up the work that we're doing over the next several weeks into three main buckets, operations, instruction and communication. And so under the communications, our team is working on a communications infrastructure plan that includes teacher Blackboard, mass notifications and contact information updates. So parents, we're noticing that some parents don't have their contact information updated in the system. And so they're updating it in the system so they can get all the information. We also have employee communication, HR support plan for employees that have HR issues as we're out. And then a regular communication plan, whether that's written correspondence regarding teacher expectations, remote learning opportunities. So we have various categories of communication that we're working on to make sure that we're hitting all the channels and getting the information out across the district.
That include our call system?
Absolutely.
Phone calls.
That's our Blackboard connect.
That's what the Blackboard is.
And I may have missed this, but did we discuss, did you discuss the kids that may not have internet, Wi-Fi? Because I saw something where Comcast is offering free Wi-Fi for those that, did you see that information?
Yeah, we, there's actually several Comcast's, one, AT&amp;Ts, a lot of them are doing that. Unfortunately, some of those are tied to other services that they provide. So if you get a service, they'll give you the free Wi-Fi. Our IT department has been actively, and Dr. Watson mentioned quite a few different avenues that we're taking, looking at different vendors and opportunities. But there are about three or four of those that we've actually been in contact with and we'll continue to pursue those.
Want to talk a little bit also just the ideas around Wi-Fi on buses and things that...
Yeah, so we've gone so far as there are some systems that you could potentially put on a vehicle to go to a neighborhood. And so those are some other avenues that we're looking at. There are avenues that are take-home devices that are very costly because most of the time, the take-home Wi-Fi device also comes with a monthly fee. And so that tends to be a huge upfront cost and then ongoing cost to the school district. So we're really looking at a bunch of different avenues to be able to see how we can support families. And maybe some of those community-type support with vehicles could be something that we'll be able to introduce. But we're checking them all out. We're overturning all the stones.
Thank you, thank you. I know this is bringing a lot of new innovative ideas into the city. And as you were talking, Mark, I thought about, Debbie, help me. There was several years ago when we had a mayor, and I'm trying to think, was it Bill White? Who wanted to put internet for everybody free of charge throughout the county? And we couldn't see it happen at that time. But the more this is happening, government and local government as well may step in and start helping us make this happen. But there will be hotspots in internet throughout the county. Because I know they wanted to do this years ago, but it didn't happen, but it's coming back. It may happen, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Miranda, Dr. Henoosa and Ms. Bradford. We appreciate this information given to us. Let me stop and recognize that... Uh, let me stop and recognize that, uh, Mr. Davis is with us here. He came in at seven seventeen this evening, so thank you for joining us, Mr. Davis. Our next item is agenda participation. This item allows members of the public an opportunity to speak on the agenda items before those items are considered by the board. Mr. Brinkley, do we have anyone registered to speak on the agenda participation?
We do not.
Okay. So for our next item, I'd like to recognize our general counsel, Jeremy Brinkley.
So I figured rather than make you try to look way back in the back of the room at me, I'd come up here. Um, the first item I need to talk to y'all about tonight is Chacho's Restaurant. Uh, we talked about that, what seems like a while ago, uh, on Thursday at the work session. Um, Chacho's is seeking to open a location at the old Taco Cabana on nineteen sixty, uh, and you may remember, that Taco Cabana closed about a year ago. Um, it was right next to a Black Eyed Peas that also closed, and I think that Black Eyed Peas closed two years ago and burned down shortly thereafter. Um, they've actually just built a car wash there now. Chacho's wants to open, and they wanna sell alcohol. Um, the reason this came to the district is because the, uh, County Commissioners Court is now requiring that any, any business looking to get a variance to sell alcohol near a school has to provide a letter from the school board supporting, or at least saying that they do not oppose such a variance. Um, when the board discussed it on Thursday at the work session, um, the board requested that we send a poll out to the, uh, major elementary school community. We did that. Um, that poll went out on March sixth, the, the Friday right after the board meeting. It was actually open until today. It's been open for eleven days. There had been eighty-six responses. Fifty-one of those responses were yes. Um, and let me tell you what we asked them first, how about that? I had this planned, and then I got up here and, um...
That always happens.
That always happens, right? Um, so what we told parents was that Spring ISD was recently notified that Chacho's Restaurant is interested in opening a location at twenty twenty-five FM nineteen sixty west, in the building that Taco Cabana formerly occupied. Similar to Taco Cabana, Chacho's plans to offer alcoholic beverages on their menu. Uh, due to the restaurant's close proximity to Major Elementary, we are reaching out to you to gather feedback and input regarding the possibility of Chacho's opening at this location. The questions we asked them, we didn't get going into a lot of detail with the questions. The questions were, um, uh, the survey was three different response types. One was, "I do not, um..." Oh, shoot, I thought I had that on here. Um, the first one was, "I'm in favor of Chacho's opening." The second one was, "I'm not in favor of Chacho's," and the third one was, "I do not have a strong opinion either way." Um, so with that, the results are eighty-six total responses. Fifty-one of those responses were in favor of Chacho's opening. That's fifty-nine percent. Thirty of those responses were not in favor of Chacho's, that was thirty-five percent, and five responses were that they do not have a strong opinion either way. Um, and so I bring that information on the poll back to the board, so that the board can determine if the district wishes to oppose the Chacho's request for variance. We do have a draft letter, um, that would go to the Commissioners Court, and I will hand it out to you now.
First of all, good evening, everybody. I have one question. When it was Taco Cabana, they, I think they did serve alcoholic beverages of some type, right?
They did. They served Beverly Margaritas and beer. Uh, but I do know they served alcoholic beverages.
Thank you.
Do you know if we got any calls, actually, other than what was done through the survey?
I don't believe we did. I actually talked to Tiffany today to ask how long the poll had been running. Um, I, it, they had intended to shut it down early, they actually, I think we accidentally left it up until today, uh, because there was so much else going on. Um, I will say that our last response on the poll was March eleventh.
Okay.
Um, we didn't receive any responses after March eleventh.
Thank you.
Have we had anything to elevate?
I, I do think, um, there is some benefit in these buildings not remaining vacant.
Yeah, homeless people in it now.
Sorry, the Chinese restaurant right next to it, it's really, Orleans Chinese Restaurant, they definitely using that, living out in all that, all the time.
They have tents up there.
Mm-hmm. There's homeless people in cardboard tents in the drive-thru of, uh, Taco Cabana now.
So, do y'all have any more questions for me?
Board members, do you have any more comments or questions?
I have one more. So you said ninety, ninety, how many went out?
We received eighty-six responses. And fifty-nine percent of those were in favor of Chacho's, thirty-five percent were not. We didn't, we didn't tie it to the alcohol, we didn't tie it to any of that, we just said, "Are you in favor of Chacho's? Are you not in favor of Chacho's?"
What's Meyer's, I don't know, seven hundred students now?
How many, how big is Meyer? Even major?
Uh, maybe major, yes. Um, approximately seven hundred students, you're about right, it was about a movement.
That survey was targeted to the families that attend.
We only met Meyer yet.
Right, major.
Major, yes.
Okay.
The usage of the survey is about ten percent, basically, right? Most surveys we do is based about ten and fifteen percent return rate, in most cases.
Average is twelve, nationally.
National average is twelve.
Okay.
I will now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve or deny Chaco's Restaurant for variance to offer alcoholic beverages for sale at twenty twenty-five FM nineteen sixty west near Major Elementary School.
And if I may, I believe there was an updated motion document?
Okay.
We haven't.
Yes, okay.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the letter that Spring ISD does not oppose Chaco's request for variance to offer alcoholic beverages for sale at twenty twenty-five FM nineteen sixty west near Major Elementary.
Madam President, I'll second.
It's been moved by Winford Adams and second by Dawn Davis, that the Board of Trustees approve the letter that Spring ISD does not oppose Chaco's request for variance to offer alcoholic beverages for sale at twenty twenty-five FM nineteen sixty west near Major Elementary School. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Brinkley. You have additional presentation. Please continue.
One more item. I'm gonna go ahead and pass out this resolution. I will say, these, this is truly hot off the presses. Um, we have been getting guidance, uh, pretty much up to the minute, up to the hour, um, and, and this resolution is a product of, uh, guidance from not only within the district, from myself, from the cabinet and superintendent, but from, um, the two different law firms that we work with, who both independently are, are providing guidance to their clients. Um, and so what I can do, this is a little longer than some of our normal resolutions, um, and I can either allow the board a, a few minutes to read this, or I can start to walk you through what the more important whereas and be it resolved sections.
I'd prefer to read it, yeah.
Okay.
I'll need a few moments to read it.
I'm happy to wait until y'all come in.
Thank you.
Do we need any more time? Okay, thank you. Hearing none. Please let us continue.
Okay, so there is, there's a lot here. And this really, this document really is a lot to take in. I think the first three or four of these are pretty self-explanatory. This is just the acknowledgement that various local, state, federal, and international organizations have declared states of emergency regarding this COVID-19 pandemic. The fifth paragraph down identifies that the governor of the state of Texas has temporarily suspended certain provisions of the Open Meetings Act, which is something we'll talk more about in a few minutes. What that's going to require, and you'll understand why that's in this document when we get to the last resolution, which ultimately suspends the public participation portion of the Board Policy BED. The reason for that is, so the governor's suspension of the Open Meetings Act included suspension of the provision requiring public participation for agenda items to allow more orderly and more efficient board meetings via teleconference and telephone. It becomes especially hard to know, especially if it's a teleconference, who is speaking, or is the party that truly registered to speak the one who's actually speaking? The requirement there, though, is that the board offer an alternative method of the public to bring their concerns to the board. We have the great Elevate tool, which is what we included in here, of course. If the board would like to see that changed to another method, we can do that. That will still allow the public to interface with the board and bring their concerns to the board. And so that's the reason for that, paragraph number five. As we get a little lower, you'll notice that what we're really talking about is not a district closure, it is a disruption to normal operations. As we get into an extended timeframe, that's going to be very important here, that the district is not truly closed. We're going to be providing instructional opportunities, but we needed to make sure we had language in here, too, to understand that facilities are not open. This is not our normal day-to-day, and that's going to be important as we get into Texas Public Information Act provisions and statutes.
Jeremy, so is that how we're defining normal operations? Is when we reopen our facilities for normal use?
We haven't gone so far as to define normal operations, but we've certainly looked at this as a disruption to normal operations. Currently, and it's going to depend on what context your question is, and if it's in the public information context.
Actually, in the procurement context. So let me let you finish, and then I'll ask my question.
Okay, okay. A big part of this, too, as you get down to the 10th paragraph, the second to last one on the first page, is that employees are still going to be expected to work and to perform their duties, especially as we continue offering more instructional opportunities, and the district does need to operate. It's just a different manner of operation than we've, than we're used to. Those are, those are the big part of the whereas's. Again, it's the board finding that there is a state of emergency and that there is a public purpose for doing these things that are down in the resolution section. The big chunks of the resolution are, we want to pay our employees for the days that they've had to miss, so that they don't hurt financially for that, and so that we can retain those employees, continue morale. We have a number of non-exempt employees, child nutrition staff and custodial staff and others who have had to come, who have come to work to provide these meals, herb side meals and those kind of things, while their colleagues may be at home. They've come in and done work, and so part of this is to pay them for that time that they've come in. As we get down, and so the first resolution is basically that you're incorporating all of the above.
Before you move on to the last, can we look at the last whereas?
Yes.
So the same employees that are unable to perform their duties as requested will be expected to take sick leave. Correct?
Okay, I want also, when you finish.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, so basically, employees are going to be expected to be responsive. They're going to be expected to respond to their supervisor, and if there's something that needs to be done, they're going to be expected to do it. If they're going out of town, if they're not available, if they're... I don't want to get into sick with COVID-19 yet, but if they're sick with the flu, if they're, you know, otherwise can't do the work.
My internet's down, I can't get on. That's my question. All right.
So it... Trying to think of... I have an opinion. My opinion is that if your internet's down, you can't do your work. I mean, is that, we're not paying for your internet, and so that may be a reason that you can't do your work. I think these, those are the kind of things that we're going to have to figure out and overcome. I'm not suggesting that somebody has to take leave because their internet's down. That may be unavoidable. There are times here where our internet's down. But I do think those are some of the things that we're going to have to overcome as we go through this. And if we start seeing it to be a pattern of every time they get a call and a request, "Oh, no, my internet just went down," then we start to have an issue, just like normal performance issues for employees.
I was teaching when I kid, and I remember, because my last year teaching, I would go to NHB, Houston Public Library parking lot to access the internet. When you were talking about being able to do it in schools, I thought, well, that's what I used to do anyway. I used to go to the library parking lot and get their internet, so.
Mr. Breaker, I have a quick question. This is the second one on page two, the second whereas. And this is just for clarification. When we're talking about long-term subs, I guess those are the subs that are covering a classroom for a teacher that's not available, right? So do we have a minute, or, you can't answer that, I didn't ask that, but...
I don't have the correct number. We have several long-term.
We have several long-term, this, we could... So that's taking care of those subs that's in that classroom that's covered, they cannot...
That's more than 10 days.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. Thank you. Thank you.
Still, policy defines long-term subs as 10 days and other...
10 days in the same classroom.
It's consistent, okay.
10 days in the same classroom.
I just want, we might want to think with some language around that last one. Whereas, if it's beyond their circumstances, we don't force them into sick time.
And...
So we don't want people abusing it, I get that.
We do, we do clarify that it's circumstances covered by our district's leave policy. And the internet being down, I know it's just one example. You know, there are certainly ways to kind of move around that and get internet, but there are going to be other examples, and there are going to be other things that come up. And I think what we're going to have to ask of our administrators is, be reasonable. But we also, we hope it won't happen, but you always have to plan for the employee who is truly never available at the time that they're needed and isn't going to be available to cover their class, or decides that they're going to take a paid vacation to go out of state. And we need to make sure that we're able to hold those accountable.
We always have coaching opportunities that require...
Yes.
Necessary steps.
I would, exactly, I would see that as coaching opportunities and formally written expectations and other methods that we normally use to address certain performance concerns.
I mean, we, so I'm going to, this sort of gets to a concern I have, but like, we might be looking at a new normal. We might be looking at, as we're talking about this with our students, but my new work reality might be that I never go to my office again for a variety of reasons, and so if I can't figure out a way to be productive and a benefit to my organization, why do they need me? So.
When we're talking about payment, are we talking about the basic salary, or are we going to be paying extra stipends for like coaches and...
That's a great question.
Other people who do those kinds of things.
That is also a very good question. Currently, right now, as Ann and I have discussed it, it's been your daily rate of pay that we would normally pay you if it was a weather closure, an ice day, or rain day. Those are things that we're going to have to look at more closely and probably bring back to the board at future board meetings. This is probably not the last resolution you're going to see. And as, as we have other pieces, things like that come up that we've thought about, and as we've had some time to reflect on this, there are probably going to be new resolutions that come to the board to either amend, address, or deal with new issues that have arisen through this new normal.
Just for the record, we haven't gotten to the resolved yet.
I can wait and...
We were down, I'm ready for questions on all of it.
I'm back.
I think my colleague across the way is already talking about the resolves. May I go ahead and talk about?
Yeah.
Okay. Just explaining to me, I know we did this before with our police officers, and we didn't know, we had a conversation with them. We had our last hurricane, or flood, whatever. Just from my mindset, and for the record, explain that exemption piece on our test plan of police officers.
And so historically, the police officers have not received what we kind of lovingly refer to as premium pay. So your non-exempt employee, when we, when we refer to premium pay, your non-exempt employee is getting paid for that day, just like all the other employees are getting paid. So they're getting, if their daily rate is, I don't know, I'm going to make up a number, $100, they get that $100 like all other non-exempt employees are getting. And then if they actually come to work, they get the $100 for coming to work. So they're getting double pay for coming to work. Historically, law enforcement officers have not received that because their job as emergency personnel is going to be to come to work. I think what we saw in Hurricane Harvey was a situation where people truly genuinely couldn't get in. We had physical barriers to getting in due to flooding and other road obstacles. In this case, our officers are working, they're coming in, they're getting their job, they're getting their job done, they're doing their job, they're getting paid. The goal of this is to ensure that no employee's losing money, but it's not necessarily to create a situation where people are getting double pay when they're coming in.
So for Harvey, is it because of the fact they could not come to work, and we had to do a resolution to authorize some type of fancy sale bills for that reason, right? It's entirely different, right?
Yes, this is, this is an entirely different situation.
Thanks for clarifying that.
And so like I said, the first resolve just reincorporates all the whereas so that they don't get lost. The second resolve is so that everyone will get paid for the days missed. The third resolve is that premium pay for the non-exempt employees who actually do come to work when asked. The third resolve is basically to delegate certain things to the superintendent so that those can move more quickly. The first one is to create guidelines and make determinations, make determinations regarding those absences that are due to COVID-19, being quarantined due to COVID-19, maybe being quarantined due to a presumptive positive, so that the superintendent, along with his staff and cabinet, can make some decisions on how do we handle those employees. There are districts who are looking at potentially, once they exhaust their leave bank, allowing them to have a little bit more paid leave because of the quarantine period that results here. I'm not saying that's what we're doing here, but it's so that more reflected and better thought-out decisions can be made than trying to make decisions on the spot right now for what we're going to do for those classes of employees. And it may also depend on how widely widespread the district is affected by presumptive positives and those kind of things. The second piece is to allow the superintendent to request any necessary waivers from TEA to help speed those up, so that if waivers do become available for certain things, or necessary for certain things, we can get those done. The third piece of it is really...
Last.
I'm sorry.
Which one are you on?
I am on the second, so last page. If you ignore the blank page at the end, I'm so sorry for that.
Sub two, I'm good.
Sub one, sub two, sub three is really a formality for TPIA purposes. It's Public Information Act. Currently, because our employees don't have access to the buildings and their records, our public information timelines are suspended. What this third sub-paragraph does is allows us to utilize a special procedure under the government code that if our employees do regain access to those records but are still dealing with this pandemic, dealing with responding to the pandemic, we can toll the PIA timelines for up to another two weeks. We may or may not need that, but rather than having to call a board meeting to try to do that, this would allow the superintendent to make that decision and make that request to the Attorney General. The second to last resolve that you'll see is a really long one, and it's basically the emergency procurement resolution. It allows the district to forego competitive procurement for certain services and items that would be necessary to mitigate, prevent, restore, and repair damage caused to our equipment, our personal property, our facilities, or to protect the safety of our staff and students. Really, what we're thinking here is, this isn't a tree fell on our building, and we need to get it fixed to keep more rain from coming in. This is, we need to figure out how to disinfect all of our buildings before students come back in, or if students do start coming back in, how do we start disinfecting those buildings on a daily and nightly basis to make sure that those buildings are safe for the people who enter them? That's really what we're looking at here, and that's where I mentioned earlier that we have been working closely with procurement and with an outside attorney who is very specialized in procurement to ensure that we're meeting and complying with those processes required by FEMA should those funds become available, that we've done everything right, and we can try to get reimbursement for these emergency purchases.
I just have one recommendation, and that's at the end of number four in our resolution, that it says that here under, he'll notify us at the next regular, regular board meeting following such purchases. I would venture to suggest we say that exceed the $50,000. Because normally, he doesn't notify us of anything over that amount anyway. So all of it's going to be over. So you have to tell us anyway, okay. I didn't want, you have to come back for every little thing.
We'll do it like we do the co-op.
And then the last further resolve that you'll see at the very bottom of the page is the one that I mentioned earlier, and that's suspension of the public participation piece of board meetings, and what that's really going to allow is for more efficient and, yeah, basically more efficient teleconference and video conference meetings, should the board want to start doing those.
Dr. Watson, do you think Elevate is appropriate to, instead of having a toll-free number? I'm just throwing it out there, Mr. You think Elevate?
There can be either one. People definitely know how to use Elevate, so that's fine. It won't be a new thing.
I see. We just couldn't do what we have.
Elevate, we already have it, it's already in place.
We have enough to do.
Everybody, everyone knows it's in place already, so, you know.
There's one thing missing here for me that I could have missed.
Yes.
And that is through the... And that is through these video conferences, meetings, are we allowed to vote?
So yes, and that's not gonna be part of the resolution. And in fact, I'm not even sure that voting is talked about in the KBS memo that I handed out while you're reading. We will be allowed to vote, so we'll be allowed to conduct full video conference or teleconference meetings with voting in place without somebody having to be here. In fact, one of the provisions that was waived is that we no longer, we won't have to physically post out front, we can virtually post. They've suspended the agenda participation piece. They've, we must, we have to provide a free call-in or free link to the video conference. One of the technologies we're looking at, and honestly, one of the reasons we couldn't take advantage of this tonight is because we've gotta find a platform that's gonna work. Zoom looks like a pretty good platform. It actually will also record the meeting, which is one of our requirements, that we have to be able to record the meeting still. It provides a video option, but it also provides phone call-in options. So if somebody doesn't have video, it does allow them to call in via phone. I also believe it allows us to mute certain participants so that we don't have disruptions occurring. And at least if we do, I think then we can identify where that disruption is coming from and remove it. One of my big fears looking at this was, so what happens when you get the person who calls in, and there's so much noise in the background, the meeting can't go forward? And it's not from a meeting participant, it's from a meeting observer. You know, one option is that we just ask everyone to mute, or if we have the ability, we mute them.
You can mute all lines, you can release lines at a certain time, you can do that with Zoom, you can also do it off the WebEx.
And so those are some of the things that we're looking at and considering. But we will be able to vote. We might have to change how we vote. It may need to be that we pull the board and each board member says, you know,
Did his name is?
Jeremy Binkley, I vote yes, or, you know, whatever it is.
Should that not be in here somewhere?
That doesn't need to necessarily be in the resolution. The suspension of the Open Meetings Act is allowing us to do the video conferencing, and I think what we're just gonna have to do is figure out how to, how to make some of these things work now over video or over telephone. If we're over telephone, it's even clearer because if you're doing a teleconference, the law requires that you identify who you are before you speak. So it's not just for a vote, it's for anything. If I have an opinion, I say, yeah, this is Jeremy Binkley, and here's what I have to say now. And so there are still rules in place, this is the Wild, Wild West. But this has made it so that we won't have to continue gathering. There are some districts, we had a general council's meeting this morning, there are some districts who are fully gonna be utilizing this. There are some districts who are still having their boardroom open for the public, and public participation would come in, and they would speak in the very back, and the board wouldn't even be here. Districts are doing it a variety of ways. Our big concern is how do we make sure everybody stays safe? How do we comply with the law? And I think if we're showing a very good faith effort to do so, we're gonna be in a good position. This memo has a lot of information in it, I think you'll, you know, find it useful as you reflect on this meeting and sit down and wanna read through it, there's a good FAQ at the end. But this does allow us now to do video conference calls and do them in a way that makes them actually useful.
Can I ask the board a question? Understanding the circumstances that we're in at this time, we may be over sixty and sixty-five that the government is telling us to stay in. And we know we have family members in our homes that we're trying to protect as well. Would any board member object to not doing a virtual conference call meeting for the April board meeting?
We'd object to doing it.
Of doing it, would you object to doing it for the work session and the board meeting?
I'm confused by the questions.
Do you mind if we have a virtual meeting for April work session?
Oh, I think, yeah, no, yeah.
You said it backwards.
I guess I did.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I would, I'd be fine with a virtual meeting.
Okay, no one would object to doing it, okay.
As long as we have a protocol, like you mentioned before, it's for stating your name and so forth and so forth. As long as we have a protocol sent to us prior.
Them every day on WebEx meetings.
So we'd be roughly, about the president.
And there is, yeah, there's gonna be more likelihood that you talk over someone, there won't be those visual cues of, you know, I'm about to ask a question, and I see that somebody else is about to talk, so I can pull back. And we will have to work through some of that. There may be some opportunity for shorter meetings as well to be able to use this. But it should provide another avenue for ensuring everyone stays safe. And for allowing the public to, to come and view and be a part of these meetings even if they're worried about leaving the house themselves.
If you've been watching the news, like even, they're not, studio guests are not all at the same table anymore. There, you know, there's one person in this corner of the studio, a person might be upstairs, you know. Again, it might be a new normal, we just, you know, until they come up with a vaccine, we just might not be able to gather the way we would like to, so.
They're gonna have a vast new normal.
Does anybody have any other questions about the resolution?
My wife will appreciate that, because she didn't want me coming down here today.
Neither did my daughter. But she has an immediate issue with that.
In that same regard, I am gonna recommend that when we break for closed session, that the board remain in this room since we have a nice kinda dispersed seating. And anybody who's still here, we'll ask them to step out for a moment, but I just, I think staying in here is probably procedurally gonna be more safer than trying to go into ELT.
If we have no more questions, I will now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the proposed resolution regarding emergency procedures including employee pay for the work days missed as a result of the emergency closure. Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the proposed resolution regarding emergency procedures due to COVID-19. Do we have a second?
My second.
It's been moved by Deborah Jensen, second by Janet Gonzalez, that the Board of Trustees approve the proposed resolution regarding the emergency procedures due to COVID-19. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Okay, please.
My only other update that I forgot to mention, under the health, was based upon the pandemic that we're going through now. I wanted to get final guidance from the board regarding the continuation of moving forward with the budget. And so I just wanted to make sure, based upon the items that we discussed, I think at the work session with Ms. Westbrook's, and the areas that we would focus on would be the opening up the ninth grade center, staffing, specialty schools, looking at staffing in terms of raises for employees, that those would be the areas that we would continue to focus on by us not being in the district, Ann and her team are working remotely. And so as they're getting more information in, trying to keep the budget process going, I wanted to make sure that we had your nod to be able to continue moving forward with the budget preparation.
If I recall correctly, that we were waiting for some guidance on revenues, like state revenues, I might have this all backwards. But it seems to me like what we're going through now will have some implications for our revenue stream.
Absolutely. And so that's, that's what I need the nod for, because we can't do anything until she has a nod, start plugging in numbers. And so if you say yes on the nod, then that's gonna give us information to bring to you in April with actual numbers in it. But if we don't have a nod, then we don't know what numbers to put into it to bring to you to get feedback on.
Didn't we come together as a board for priorities?
Yes.
We talked about it last month. The ones that he just mentioned, the six, the employee, that was not my understanding.
Yeah, that was in, it was in Ann's presentation that she did.
Mm-hmm, that's what it was.
And then you all mentioned it to me as well in my goals section of what you wanted me to focus on, in those areas. And so those areas, Ann, that's what came up in the presentation, and that's what I brought back.
That was part of his evaluation.
Okay, historically, in my thirteen years, we have a meeting where we identify our goals, the board goals. And then from those goals, we set the superintendent's goals, and from those goals, we establish a budget. That process has not occurred.
So you all told me that you didn't want us to, you didn't wanna change those goals, that we wanted to stay on the same focus that we were doing, not to change those. You said what we're doing now, keep focusing on those things, we're not adding anything new to it.
There's a lot of nods from all of my colleagues. That was around the twenty-twenty stuff we were staying, all that was staying the same, that was the conversation, not
You said the board goals, what they focus on, and, and the, we didn't wanna change anything to keep the, keep focusing on the same things, and that's when we put those same things in the presentation.
With regards to moving forward with establishing the strategic action plan, that is correct.
So I'm confused.
I'm gonna let it go because I see a lot of nods. And a lot of people, I don't ever participated historically in how goals were set and trickled down. We're doing it a little different this time. And if all my colleagues are fine with that, I'm fine with it.
I'd love to hear what your thinking is.
My first time, but I do recall the statement that we would, the discussion that the board, the goals would stay the same, so what you're saying is?
We said the goals, the, I'm not called pyramids. Priorities, priorities, everything that's set, that's spelled out, that was set in every chart twenty-twenty. We wanted to continue to focus on those and move them forward. We did agree to that, and that was the direction that we gave. Historically though, we've met as a board through our planning session or our workshop together. We talk about where the district is, where we think our priorities are, what we believe we should focus on as a board. And I think some of what we already have listed is appropriate. And then once we establish board goals, from those come the superintendent's goals and our priorities for the budget. That's separate then, our priorities for the strategic action plan. It's not the same.
And see, I didn't see them as the strategic plan, because in my, in my valuation, you all wrote specifically what you wanted me to focus on. And so we took those, and you said the board goals would stay the same.
We not had a board workshop, so that's just where I'm going with that.
Right, I mentioned to you, Rodney, that
We were gonna use the long start governance, have a workshop.
Where we could talk.
None of that happened.
Okay.
Well, that's a
Right now, it's almost moot. We can't have a meeting unless we do it virtual, but
Yeah, I'm good with either way, I just went on what you all said to me. You said our board goals would not change. Our board priorities would not change, we're gonna keep the same priorities. And so if you all wanna switch them, I'm perfectly fine with that, but I just went on what you all said to me.
I agree with Justine that I would like to discuss them for purposes of deepening our understanding of what we're doing. So again, so when I'm talking to people about what we're doing in spring, I'm not always crystal clear. And that's what I thought the value of a, sort of a team of eight retreat would be.
I agree with that, yes.
That's what I'm
Yeah, I agree with that, I agree with that.
Yeah, and we're following our long start governance, it starts at the top, the planning starts here, then it comes down.
So just let me know what you all want, and we'll respond accordingly.
Yeah, unfortunately, due to the circumstances that we're under now, it's kinda difficult. But I have no objection if we want to select a weekend or a time.
Not at this point. Right now, we can't, we can't.
We're under all of this.
So are we
I have a lot of time.
Yeah.
A home like this is still spread out.
You'll save me from cleaning up the yard and the house.
So I mean, are we under some time pressure, Rodney? I mean, you need your stuff by a certain time, because I'm, like, my job, I'm out till April ten as well, and so
Oh, I wish.
If we could do it virtually, that would be my preference. And like, the stuff I'm doing through Leadership Tasby, this is, one of the issues I have is, like, everybody's talking about what they're doing in their district. And I would like to participate meaningfully in that conversation, but I feel fuzzy about some of the stuff we're doing. So I was really looking forward to doing that, and if we have to do it virtually, I'm totally fine with that.
So yeah, so we still get that.
I'm gonna say, we can, we can do that and set that up, but for purposes tonight, we've already said that we want to continue with the goals and things that we want. So that would let him go on and talk with Ann and work with his committee on completing that. And we set a date to understand more of what that will entail.
I know that trustee Adams recommended when Austin canceled, that we, I know I'd already taken the time off work.
Yeah.
I mean, do we wanna use that time to do it virtually? He recommended that, I'm still open to that, because I believe leadership starts at the top. We come together as a team of eight, establish that goal and that direction, and then it goes down from there. So I think we would be remiss not to do that.
So I agree that we can definitely do that. The only thing that I would ask is that it be the team of eight and me sharing with you all, with so many things that we're trying to do to get out. I don't wanna ask the staff to have to prepare something different, so it could just be the team of eight.
I'm okay with that.
That was a suggestion. The timing.
What, starting next Thursday?
We're supposed to be leaving for Austin, for, um
For Chicago.
Yeah, for Austin, Chicago, in two weeks, the first week to April. I know I already taken the time off from work if y'all want to do it there. So.
Did you take off?
Y'all already canceled it, they put it back.
So April a better time? The former weekend and now the weekend that we were going to
The days that we were supposed to be going to Chicago.
Works for me.
However, back to the budget, I think there's a consensus to move forward.
Okay, thank you. So our next item is the consent agenda. I will now entertain a motion to approve and adopt all of the items listed on the consent agenda.
Madam President, I move the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all the items listed on the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved by Janet Gonzalez and second by Justine Durant, that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all of the items listed on the consent agenda. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next is public participation portion of our meeting. So Mr. Binkley, do we have anyone registered to speak?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Okay. Thank you. Then the Board of Trustees will now reset this open session and convene in a closed meeting in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.071, for the purpose of a private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all subjects or matters authorized. Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.074, for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. And Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.076, to consider the deployment Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.076, to consider the deployment or specific occasion for implementation of security personnel or devices. No voting will take place in the closed meeting, any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in the closed meeting will take place after the board reconvenes an open session. The time is now nine seventeen P M. We will now reconvene and resume the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees, the time is now nine fifty P M. We will now address the items discussed during closed session, are there any motions?
Madam President, I move that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to terminate the contract of Roberto Cavassos upon finding the employee failed to perform his contract without good cause and authorize the superintendent or designee to notify the employee of the proposed termination pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code. I further move that the board authorize the superintendent or designee to notify the State Board for Educator Certification that the employee failed to perform his contract without good cause and of the action taken by the board.
Second.
It's been moved by Deborah Jensen, second by Winfred Adams, that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to terminate the contract of Robert Cavassos, Roberto Cavassos, upon finding that the employee failed to perform his contract without good cause and authorize the superintendent or designee to notify the employee of the proposed termination pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code. I further move that the board authorize the superintendent or designee to notify the State Board for Educator Certification that the employee failed to perform his contract without good cause and of the action taken by the board. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
Hopefully adjourned.
Okay. It's been moved by Justine Durant, second by Kelly Hodges, that the Board of Trustees adjourn this meeting. All those in favor, please raise your right hand, motion carries unanimously, there's no further business, this meeting is officially adjourned at eight, nine fifty-three P M.